Good evening, everyone. I would like to please silence your phones if you have your phone with you. I would like to call to order the Chesterfield Township Planning Commission meeting on November 4th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. I would like to introduce a few people that are with us tonight. Robert Severt, Township Attorney, Jonathan Palin, Township Planner. And from Giffords Webster, we have Ava Miller and Stephanie Osborne. With that, if you would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call roll. Rick LaBelle.
Here.
Kathy Bosberg.
Here.
Richard Brokaw.
Here.
Ryan Carr.
Here.
Ralph Jaworski.
Here.
James Klonowski.
Mark Renault.
Here.
Eric Hyder.
Here.
And Carl Leonard is here. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from October 21st, 2025. One's it. All right. Are there any questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to approve the, make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Support.
Any discussions? Motion by Carl Leonard, supported by Rick LaBelle, to approve tonight's agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have public comments, if anyone would like to come up and talk about anything at all. If it's about the public hearing tonight, you'll be able to come up at that time. But if you want to talk about anything else, you have three minutes, feel free to come on up and speak your piece. Nobody? Sure. Okay. Sorry? The, the, the public hearing will be, you'll be able to talk at that point. But at this time, it's public comments about anything else you'd like to talk about. Yeah.
We'll talk about the price of gas. You can talk about the price of gas.
It might go over your three minutes. All right, there are no public comments at this time. We do have a public hearing tonight. And if Ava would like to discuss, I'm going to just read it off here. So we have the Forest Glade Drive detached non-residential building, number 2025-06, special land use, section 1 dot 1 dot 4 dot C dot 8, comma, R1A, 28.506 acres, located at 53377 Forest Glade Drive, parcel ID 15-0, 15-09-10-400-001. So the way this will work tonight is Ava will talk about the item on the agenda. And then the applicant will have an opportunity to come up and talk about it. And then the public will have an opportunity to ask some questions. So. Yes. So we will do that first. We're going to, I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing. Need support?
Support.
Motion to open the public hearing by Carl, supported by Mark Renault. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mark. With that.
All right. Okay. The applicant is proposing to build a 4,000 square foot Northridge Steel manufactured pole barn to store personal property on the currently vacant site. The site, including where the pole barn is proposed to be located, is primarily wetlands. Detached non-residential buildings are defined in section 2.2 as, including but not limited to, boathouses, garages, or storage buildings customarily accessory to a principal residential use may be permitted as freestanding non-accessory structures and are special land uses in the R1A district. Access onto the site does not currently exist, and the applicant proposes to build a gravel driveway to the barn from Forest Glade Drive at the southeast corner of the parcel. The planning commission is tasked with reviewing the plans and deciding as to whether the site meets all zoning ordinance standards and their intent as applicable, and must find that all eight standards for special land use have been met to grant the special land use approval. The applicant has provided a narrative explaining how the project complies with these standards. The site is compliant with the development standards listed on the table in page two and requires special land use approval. Following the table, we'll start with A, building materials. Based on the materials the applicant submitted, the majority of the pole barn appears to be red with black trim and made of steel. There are two main doors and two overhead doors on the proposed building. For sidewalks, the applicant shall include sidewalks along their frontage on Forest Glade Drive and Greenwood Drive. No screening is required. As for tree preservation, the applicant shall confirm whether or not they are removing trees and will need to acquire a tree removal permit if any will be removed. Looking at E, this is a bit of an unusual circumstance as buildings related to single-family uses do not normally need site plan approval, but a landscaping plan is required with all site plan applications. However, the planning commission has discretion over landscaping and can determine whether or not, or to what degree, it is necessary to meet the intent of the landscaping standards. If the landscaping standards were to be applied with over 271 feet of frontage along Greenwood and Forest Glade Drive, at least nine trees would be required for this site. As for lighting, it appears no lighting is proposed on the outside of the pole barn. And the applicant shall confirm that this is the case, and if not, provide the required information to show compliance with section 5.37 lighting. And then that concludes my report.
Thank you. Is the applicant here this evening? Please come up, state your name and your address. Hold on one second. There's a little button on the far right.
Good evening. My name is Ben Aloya. I am the applicant under this application for the owner, Bradley Kirsten. Thank you, Ava, for that recitation of the information. So we did apply for a special land use, and this is a pole barn. This pole barn will be located on the 29.05 acres, which is densely wooded and has wetlands. The intent is to build the pole barn as indicated on the plan, at least 120 feet away from any residential. As for the lighting plan, there's, at this time, there's no plan to, for exterior lights. This is simply going to be for personal storage during the day. There will be only a gravel drive leading to it as of right now. There is not a current plan to build a house on the frontage lot. There may be in the future. But as of right now, that has not been in process. So, you know, we did outline the special land use standards, and I just think I need to make a record of that just for the purpose of process and procedure. We believe that we meet all eight of the special land use requirements as outlined in our application. Simply stated, it's own residential. It's master-planned residential. We know that the Heatherwoods Estates, single-family residential is to the south. The I-94 expressway is to the west. To the east of the property is the vacant Acre Bay School District. And the property to the north is the abandoned landfill. Again, we intend to maintain a wooded barrier between the pole barn and the adjacent parcels. And, and obviously, except for the area in which we will build the pole barn, the vast majority of the acreage will remain wooded, and it has wetlands in there. After the construction, construction of the pole barn is completed. We don't believe that this will create any traffic hazards or any unusual traffic patterns. Again, it's just a pole barn. It will be for personal use, not for commercial use. Access will be through the Heatherwoods Estates subdivision. And we don't believe that, obviously, that this will increase traffic remarkably. We intend to build a gravel driveway to connect the pole barn, and that's included in the site plan. In terms of the designated, the use, the size, the location, the intensity, we've outlined that in the site plan and in our application. Again, it's only for personal property use. It won't be for any commercial use. And we don't believe that this will create a nuisance. So we've outlined in our application that we're requesting to build a 100 by 40 Northridge, Northridge Steel manufactured pole barn on the property. We'd like to do that as soon as possible. The walls are 14 feet in height, and we've, we've included a design of the pole barn. And the structure height will be approximately 22 feet. We don't believe that this will interfere with or discourage the development or use on the adjacent properties. And it will not be built in violation of any ordinances. We plan to follow all ordinances in land uses in the zoning district. The proposed use, we believe, will relate harmoniously with the physical and economic aspects of the adjacent land uses. It is, it is, we know this is special land use that may be permitted by special land use. Again, this is in the wooded area. It's not going to be on the residential lot, which is affronting the subdivision. We think that's very important because it's not that, we don't believe it's going to be viewed really by the residents because it's going to be back in the wooded area. Only the gravel driveway will be visible by the residents as they, as the access to this pole barn area. And again, we've outlined in our application about zoning and that, you know, the surrounding properties. We don't believe it affects at all, obviously, the 94 expressway or the Anchor Bay School District property or the landfill, really. The issue is the residential, and it's a very low impact, and it won't really be seen. So we've outlined, again, it's, all the, all the other aspects, six, seven, and eight, is really a regurgitation of what we've talked about here already. I just want to address a couple of aspects about the planner's report. You know, we are not developing the front, frontage of this parcel. We're only building a gravel driveway. We, at this time, we don't intend to put exterior lights. We would ask that the, the planning commission not condition this approval on frontage sidewalks at this time once, there may be a residential home built in the future. And if that occurs, obviously, the sidewalk should be in place. It's required by ordinance. And in terms of the trees, we're not, again, we're not developing that front parcel there. So we would ask that that not be implemented this time. But I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Anything else at this? Okay. We're going to have you step aside. We're going to let the audience ask some questions and make some comments. And then we'll have you come back up and address that when they're done.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, would anybody like to come up and say anything? You got three minutes to come up and express your comments?
Are you opening the public hearing?
Yes. We already did. So again, if somebody would like to come up, and you got three minutes?
My name's Dennis Hooks.
Yeah, I was going to have you name your.
I live in Lot 90.
Thank you.
And I've been a resident since 2001, and I moved into the sub, and it was 2014. And my whole concern about this property is the flooding that I've had to endure for years, since I've been there. Now, one gentleman named Don Cottington helped me out quite a bit. So, I mean, he wants to put this pole barn up, and it's his property. I have no issues as far as that goes. My issue is, is he, is this going to affect how much flooding I get or not? Because I could have tied a boat onto my patio last year. And Brad told me that the school system cleaned their drains and their ditches. And he, you know, he's attentive after the fact because they put a drain in behind my house to stop the flooding. So he develops this. Is this going to alleviate the flooding of my home? Because the township sent the water department out and basically told me it's my responsibility to keep our drains clean, to drain the water. The problem is, the drain in the woods was set at a certain height by the state with Tom's basement waterproofing, who was the previous owner. And it, by the time the drain starts working, there's three feet, four feet of water behind my home. And they put a berm up, and it goes around the berm, clogs the other drain, and it floods my property anyway. And it's kind of degraded it into the back. You know, every year my taxes go up, and I've even tried to protest one year. And I got told, well, we don't see any problem with it. You know, the property goes up in value, I agree, but it's a, it's a real issue. Brad knows about it. He's done the best he can to try and get the water to go down. You know, and I've been in contact with him about it, and he, he's attentive with it. But I'm just wondering, what, what is this going to do? Is this going to make it better for me down the street, or is it going to make it worse? Because after they cleaned all the ditches out and stuff, I mean, I had water coming in my basement from the one storm. And it just, I mean, you know, it's very, very frustrating for me when the water department comes out and says, well, if your drain's not working, you're responsible to get it cleaned out. You need to talk to your association, which there is none. So as far as I'm concerned, he wants to put this giant barn up for his own personal use, that's fine. What is he going to do about the flooding that comes into my home and has almost destroyed my basement? You know, that's, that's my whole concern about all this. If you're going to be building on it, what are you doing for me? Because I'm paying over five Gs a year.
The three minutes is up. Thank you very much for your comments. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Linda Seaworth. I live over on Greenwood Drive, just across from that property. The ordinance should be enforced as written. It was written for the exact purpose as a petitioner is seeking to have it waived, and that is to preserve residential areas as residential. The special use permit does not outline a timeline by which, by which a residence will be constructed and occupied, nor does it contain any enforcement mechanism, if granted, that would require the property owner to construct a residence. Therefore, this special use permit should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do you have any comments?
Good evening. Janice Young. I took a look at the zoning ordinance quickly before I came here. This, this parcel zoned R1A. And from what I could glean from the zoning ordinance, I, I thought it had to be, there had to be a principal residence or principal structure to have an accessory building. I didn't know you could just build a pole barn on, on vacant land. It's noted here several times in here. And then there's also this little accessory building chart that you guys have. If it's five acres and greater, it's a 3,000 square foot max allowable accessory structure building. So it kind of exceeds that. And as far as the special land use goes, it really does not meet all the criteria. The first one, the proposed use shall be such location and size and character that it would be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the surrounding neighborhood. Okay, it's a budding up to a neighborhood, so it's really doesn't, if it's building a house, be different story. Number five, the proposed use shall relate harmoniously with the physical and economic aspect. Same thing. It doesn't, doesn't fit. But the proposed use is necessary for the public convenience at the proposed location. It's a private storage building, so it will not benefit the public at all. And number eight, the proposed use shall not cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the vicinity. It could, maybe. Maybe it will, maybe it won't. As the old gentleman mentioned, there's flooding issues, so it could negatively affect it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please state your name and address.
William B. Seaworth. 36865 Greenwood. In the ordinance, am I reading it incorrectly? Because it says 3,000 square foot pole structure, not four. Can I ask questions or no?
Will the trust hand a question?
Oh, question. That's. Okay. All right. That's it. Thank. And, oh, I'm. I'm, I'm against the pole barn being put up as so stated at this time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come up? State your name and address, and you have three minutes.
I'm on Greenwood Drive. I do have a question I'll address at the end. As you said, you'll answer questions later. My concern is that, first of all, we are a residential area. And my understanding, as I've heard here too, that this is strictly going to be a pole barn for storage, which is basically a warehouse, that does not fit into a residential area. The other concern that I have is that years back, my husband and I also tried to apply for a freestanding building on our property, and we were told absolutely not, that a home had to be present first. And then you could petition the county here or, or city here for a freestanding building. So without a home present in front of that, it certainly is, does not coordinate with what we had been told in the past is required for this type of structure. And we do not believe that a warehouse facility is conducive to a neighborhood that is going up to worth $500,000 property value. It might not impact me as I don't live as close to it as some other people here, but eventually it impacts the entire neighborhood if property values start going down because we basically have a warehouse in our neighborhood. So that's what I have to say on that. The question that I have, and I would like to know if anybody on this panel or any elected or appointed official here in Chesterfield is owner of this property. Because that I do not know, and I think that's important for us to know. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come up? Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Hey, my name is Lorraine Blandino. I live on Shaun Drive. And all I can think of when I, when I think of the size of this building, this pole barn that, that he wants to put up, I can't imagine anything like that in a neighborhood. It belongs on an industrial street. It's going to ruin the neighborhood looks. You can't hide it. And what size house is going to be put on that piece of property? I don't think 100 by 40 or bigger than that. It's not residential in any way, shape, or form. And I think it's going to be a detriment to the rest of us homeowners. It, it's just going to ruin the looks of the subdivision and perhaps our property values, perhaps flooding. We have some genuine, genuine concerns here that I think really need some thoughtful, some thoughtful time with the board here to really think about standing up for the rules as they've been through the years. You can't tell one person, no, you can't do that when then the supervisor of, of the township wants to do something even bigger and worse and let him have it just because of who he is? I don't think so. I don't, he doesn't deserve, or anybody doesn't deserve special consideration because of who they are. The, the overall good of the neighborhood should come first in the rules of the township. And I agree with everybody else on what they've said.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come up? That's it? Thank you for your comments and questions, and we'll bring it back up to the board and see if the applicant. Did you want to respond to any of that?
I don't know if I can respond to all of it. I just want to clarify a point, and I'm not sure that the residents understand. The residential, this is connected to a residential lot, which The residential, this is connected to a residential lot, which is adjacent to these neighbors. The, the, the open area, which is the residential lot, there will not be a pole barn on that. The pole barn is on the 29 acres, which is behind it, which is completely wooded. There will be a gravel access to that, but it's not going to be visible next. It's, it's not like there's going to be a house and a pole barn next to the house. It won't be a neighbor, excuse me, a neighboring house and a pole barn right next to it. It's going to be deep into the woods. And, and again, this is for personal use, it's not for warehousing. So it's not going to be a commercial use. It's not going to be used to run a business out of. So he's just going to person, store his personal items in there. As a flight in the parcel, it's the first I've heard about it. Certainly, this is into the, in the woods. I don't know how this personally affects this individual, but I'm sure your engineering department will look at that. I don't believe, being this is on a 29 acre parcel, this would have any more impact on his property. You know, we believe we are, we are following the ordinances, so I'm not sure that there's any, understanding who my client is, but there isn't any special request, we're coming with a formal application and with your serious consideration of it. I just want to kind of go back to the sidewalk and tree issue, make sure I clarify. I, one of our concerns is, is that at some point, there, there, there's going to be a house on there. We don't have the current plans in place to do that yet, but, and then when you're constructing it, are we going to be destroying those sidewalks and destroying those trees that may be put on there? So it seems premature to put those on there at this point, but we understand that at some point in the future, a house is developed, then at that point, the trees, obviously, and sidewalks should, should of course be going, go in, but that's really what we're saying. And I'm available for any questions from the planning commission on this application.
I'm going to close the public hearing, and then we'll have some questions, and
Thank you.
Glad to have you come up.
Thank you.
Could you please push the button to shut off the mic?
On the right?
Yes, thank you much. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. Was that Mark? Motion to close the public hearing by Carl, supported by Mark. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So I'll bring it to, to the planning commissioners, and we'll start with Kathy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have three questions. One, one is the drawing shows what that pole barn would look like, the size of it. There's, one of the pictures shows, appears to be like blank walls where you can look through to see what, what it looks like. Will there be a concrete, on this picture, it just shows grass, is there going to be a concrete pad there underneath the building?
Did you want him to?
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Yeah, if you want to come back up and then answer the questions as they come up? Sure.
Wait till it turns red, the.
Hello? I, I believe so. I can get that answered for you. I don't have that currently, that information right now, but if you give me a few minutes, maybe I can get it. Good, thank you.
Try to get, all right, now it's on. And then also, will there be any plumbing or electricity put in the building when it's
I know there'll be electricity. There will, there will be electricity in there. I'm not sure there's any plumbing, but I can find that out. Thank you.
Thank you. And Eric Kider, do you have any questions?
Can I just clarify my answers? There will be a concrete floor, there will be no plumbing, but there will be electricity. Thank you.
And I'll turn it off. Okay, a few questions. First one goes to Mr. Palin, which he's, sorry about that. Will you be able to turn your mic on, or? Okay. Can you expand on the R1A district on pole barns in relationship to accessory structures by not having the houses? Is this allowed? Because, you know, and it starts with item eight, where, you know, detach non-residential building. But that, does that include where it's allowed to have it with the house, but no house, because it's been brought up a few times? I know that's why we're here, but.
One's going live at a time. Yeah, so that's why, that is why we're here for the special land use. So an accessory structure is permitted as a matter of right when you have a principal structure, and it just needs a zoning compliance and building permit, and it can be done if it meets the ordinance requirements. In this case, where there is no principal structure, that's where the special land use comes in. So it is allowed by the ordinance. So that's the reason it's here, is the planning commission looks at what's proposed, looks at the eight standards of special land use to determine if it meets those requirements, and that it can be approved without a principal structure under the special land use.
Will we need to get a variance because of the size?
No. So that accessory structure section, where it has the size, the maximum sizes, that's for accessory structures as it applies, as when it's accessory to a principal structure. Being this is a special land use for a detached, non-residential structure, those accessory structure standards do not apply in this case.
I guess this is, with a 4,000 square foot cold storage, it's not going to be heated, no plumbing, barely some electrical probably on the inside. Personal use, do you know what really he's really going to be storing in there? That's 4,000 square feet? That's not have a residence?
My understanding, it's a personal items. I mean, I, you know, to the extent of every detail of what he's going to store in there, I don't have that in front of you, but.
Okay. James Klonowski?
Just a comment. I know we have approved buildings on, on sites similar to this in the past, so it would be not, would not be unprecedented, so.
Because of the size, the 28 acres, the larger parcels like that? Oops, sorry.
No, I think it was on small lots, smaller lots as well. You know, we had special land uses for, just basically a building on lots, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? You all set?
Oh, you're the man. Can you guys hear me better now? The microphones will help. Anyways, you can't let him have it because of who he is. You're right, we, we don't do that. You let him have it because it meets the criteria, or you, you don't let him have it because it doesn't meet the criteria. So that's what we're going to decide. I understand that we're not viewed all the same way, but let me tell you, that's what we're going to do tonight, or maybe at the next meeting. Is a warehouse the same as a storage building? I'm not sure about that. Some people think it is, some people think it isn't. It, it's a 4,000 square foot barn that he's going to put his personal property in. Your flooding concern, you're not the first person to come in before us about that. But I was glad to hear you say, if, if he wants this on his own personal property, you don't have a problem with it. I hear you. And then when, when you guys come up and you say, it might meet it, it might not meet it, I'm always looking for data. I need you to tell me, it doesn't meet it because of this, and then give me data. Otherwise, I don't have any data, and I'm going to go with, with what I've found, and I've looked at pictures, and I, I've seen this property. So it's always good to bring data. It doesn't meet it because of this specific item? That'd be great for us to hear. So other than that, I'm all set, and I appreciate you guys being out here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Renaud?
Again, no questions, just an additional comment. The one area of expertise I can actually throw at this is I know it comes to this panel a lot, people worry about values, and I can tell you, the vacant parcel as is will be worth more once a building, once it's actually improved property. So you don't have to worry about values going down, that's just not going to happen because of the building. The economy or something, different story. But improving the property is not going to reduce your values at all. Honestly, I, any, any resident of Chesterfield Township who wants to develop their personal property within reason, I just, I don't see why we should stand in the way of that, so. Just my thoughts.
Thank you. Brian Carr?
No questions.
Rick LaBelle?
I'm going to ask the question again. Does the applicant intend on building a home on that property?
I'm catching on, guys, I'm sorry with the microphone. Potentially, at some point, there's no current plan in place to do so, but potentially at
Do you think that, that the applicant will be building a home on that property within the next five years?
I don't have an answer for that.
The, the property in question, first a question for Mr. Palin. When this property was, was sectioned off, when it was split up, was it, was it intended to be part of the floor, the forest glade subdivision? Or is this just a completely different piece of property that just butts up against that
At this point, it's a separate piece of property, just a butts. I don't know the full history. I believe at some point, there was plans, but that was 20, 30 years ago, and anything would since be expired, and it's been, the property's been sold several times, and now it's just a standalone piece of property.
I do have a few comments. So you've got a gentleman here who wants to build, you know, a, a storage building on his property, on 29.05 acres, correct? I personally don't see a problem with it. I really don't. It's a piece of property, a very large piece of property, property. I'm envious of the man. It's a beautiful piece of property. To put a barn way back off the road, in the woods, I don't see an issue. It's 4,000 square feet on 29.05 acres. I know that Mr. Klonowski has bigger pieces, bigger buildings than that on his property. Many of our residents do. Having this, this barn, another question that I do have, does the applicant, just to clear the air, does the applicant plan on moving into this barn, or sleeping in the barn, or renting it out for that purpose?
He does not have a plan. He will not be living in that, he will not be moving in it. Again, it's just to store personal items.
And I'm going to ask a question that you just answered, but does the applicant plan on running a business out of that barn? So you've got an individual who's got toys. He wants to put his toys in the barn. I did, as with any application, I go and I visit the site. As you know, I called and I requested permission from you this morning to, to access the site. You contacted the applicant and got me permission. He's got two tractors, an excavator, he's got trailers. Yeah, he needs to put his stuff inside of a barn. From a personal point of view, I've got a 3,000 square foot barn that was built, was on my property before I built my other house. It was wonderful. I put my windows in there, I put my ductwork in there, I put all my building supplies inside the building, and it was kept off of the site while the building was going on. If in fact, the applicant is willing to go along with this, I do have a proposal, and I don't know if this is the time to propose my, my idea, but if he is willing to propose that he's going to be building a home in a period of time, I think that there's other, the, the other things that have, that have came up, for instance, the sidewalks, as you had mentioned, there's really no reason to put in a sidewalk if you're going to be tearing it up, bringing sewers across that side street, bringing water across the side street. The tree preservation, having somebody come out and look at the trees to tell you that, again, I walked the site. He's not developing the whole property. It's just a small pad, a 4,000 square foot pad to build a building. We don't, in, in my opinion, we should waive that requirement. The frontage on the street that is requiring trees, again, he's not developing the whole property. He's putting a, a storage building to store his toys on his property. When he builds the house, then at that time, we can talk about that. As far as lighting goes, I don't see a necessity to it. In my opinion, I don't see an issue with this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I just have a couple of comments. I'm looking at the site, it's 28 acres, and the majority of it is wetlands. So even if they wanted to develop it and make something awesome out of that whole parcel, there's only so much that you can do with it. And, I mean, there's very little area that's high and dry, so a lot of wetlands there. And I think taking care of 28 acres might require some storage. Personal items don't mean, it, it doesn't always mean a camper and a boat and all kinds of toys. It's, it's farm equipment, and it sounds like there's some things out there now. I'm sure somebody on our board is, has a farm, and I'm, and I've been there, and there's, you don't have buildings big enough to store all your equipment, and some of it gets left outside, so I don't really see any major issues. I did see that there's trees blocking the view. It's just a huge piece of property, and at this point, I'm not, I'm not seeing any problems. I would like to suggest or encourage a house be built there as soon as possible, sooner than later. I'm sure there's some expenses already in place, so not sure if you can put a timeline on that, but, and it's only going to have electric, so it's not like they're, he's going to be turning it into anything other than storage, so. That's all I have at this time. If you have any final comments you'd like to make, feel free. You're all set?
I don't have any further comments.
So I'm going to ask the board, typically, we postpone a decision. If there's a lot of questions and things that are lingering, I'm not sure there's that much lingering on this. If there is, we can postpone a vote, or we can vote tonight. What's the board's pleasure?
Based on Mr. Leonard's and Mr. LaBelle's comments about building a house, Mr. Seifert, is it possible we can put an affidavit or some type of timeline if he does not build a house to develop the front with sidewalks and landscaping? If we waive the sidewalk, waive the landscaping? I'm still thinking that.
Can you ask a question again, please?
All right, if we waive the landscaping and the sidewalk based on a future development for a house, can we put a timeline or an affidavit, say that if he doesn't build a house in five years, that we make him do the improvements to the front? Of the sidewalk and the landscaping, if that does get waived? Of the sidewalk and the landscaping, if that does get waived? Yes. Cause the front, cause the front is, uh, connected to a developed subdivision, that high sidewalks, that is developed.
And you're giving him a storage building, and you're waiving the sidewalk because there is no home, and there's nothing other than a storage building, what would be the point of requiring the sidewalk to be installed if he doesn't build a house in, say, five years?
Here we go, sorry, this, this is getting ridiculous. Uh, you know, part of it is, okay, if we approve the site plan, do we approve, improve, you know, with a sidewalk and landscaping or without it? Based on, because a house should be built in five years. But if it doesn't get built, then it just stays as is, and we waived all that, based on him building a house? Is that what your comments kinda were? Am, am I getting the?
Yeah, um, well, with, uh, what Mr. LaBelle was stating is, if you have sidewalks there, and then you're doing all this other construction on the house, you may destroy them, so I think the sidewalks and the landscaping, when the permit application for the house, cause the house isn't plotted, there's nothing about the house yet, it's just a pole barn, so. I think once he does build the house and, and makes application, all those things will have to come.
If you are building a house. If he doesn't build a house, and it's ten years, we waive that, now it still looks the same. Cause we waive the sidewalk and the landscaping.
I, I think we're complicating this. I'm, I'm just, when I moved to Chesterfield Township twenty-six years ago, I lived on Forest Glade. Very familiar with the property, it's never changed. Whether he builds a house or not, I don't think we should even look at that, it's, I don't have, they believe it has any relevancy on what he's here to do. It's thirty acres, at forty, forty-two, forty-three thousand square feet per acre. It's like one point two million square feet of land, and he wants to build a four thousand square foot pole barn in the middle of woods. I don't think whether he builds a house or not really should have any relevancy for us. At some point, somebody, he might sell the property, the next person might do it, and when they come to us, or when they come to the board, whoever the board is, or they wanna build, they're gonna have to bring that residential lot on the front up to the standards of, at that time. It could be ten years from now, five years from now. I just think that we need to focus on what the request is, the request is, we are either comfortable and it meets the eight criterias, or it does not. And then the rest, we all vote on our, what we feel is the appropriate action on that. I just, I just don't think putting a time limit or a, a requirement for the house has, I just don't think it really has any bearing on what we're here to do, that's just my personal opinion. I mean, it's, it's like an ant in the middle of a woods. That woods is thick, heavy woods. I mean, I'm like Mr. Bell, personally, I don't have an issue with it. You're never gonna see it anyways, no one does. I mean, when we were there, my kids played in that field. I mean, it's, I don't know, I mean, eh, no, never had permission. I mean, so, you know, I mean, I don't know who owned it at that time, but, um, I mean, Chester, Heather Woods is a beautiful sub, like I said, we lived there for a long time, now we just, we built the house in a different, you know, we built the house there, and then we built the house, you know, in a different part of Chesterfield, you know, thirteen years later. I just don't think it's gonna have any impact to, uh, any of the residents within Heather Woods, personally, again, living there. And, I mean, that's just my thoughts, but I think we should just stick to what the applicant is requesting, and, and I, and that's it. It either meets the requirements or it does not. And let the house be the house whenever the house becomes a house. That's my thoughts.
Thank you.
I'm not, I'm not questioning the development or the size of the lot, I'm just questioning just the frontage of that small little piece that is visible to the subdivision that is just gravel. That, that's really it, cause it's a small piece on the overall scheme. So, that front where the sidewalk ends and, and the road, it's just that small little piece that's just vacant, that's open to everybody, that's what I'm concerned about.
But it's, but it's at the end, and the sidewalks are no different than now, or they end another hundred feet later, it's, it's.
It's sidewalks that go nowhere, right, it's like the road that goes nowhere, the bridge that goes to nowhere, right, it's sidewalks that go to nowhere. And then to make someone plant nine trees when they got thirty acres of heavy woods, I'm not quite understanding what nine trees are gonna do when you have a fully wooded thirty acre lot that's been pristine and untouched for decades. And like I said, I moved in there in two thousand, and it's never changed. I mean, and, and honestly, all those people that live on that lot, guess what? They all have their little fire pits back in there in the woods, it's not their property. They're all using that property when we were there, cause we have friends that lived down that street, right, and we would go play in the woods and, and again, right, I, I understand it's subjective and it's your perspective, but I'm just saying, like, it's been a vacant lot that people use anyways, permission or not. So, that's just my thoughts. From my perspective, I'm gonna focus on, you know, what the applicant's requesting, and let the house be, you know, the house whenever it gets developed, and I think that that front lot, or front portion of it can be treated once somebody does build on it, it can meet the, the ordinances at that time. That's just my thoughts.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
We do, the township does have a deferral agreement, so, if, you know, when the house would, if, if a house were to be built, it would be required anyways, but, you know, to the point of a sidewalk going nowhere, if there was other development on the other side of it, that could be a trigger, so there is a deferral agreement that is in place for that exact reason, so, that's not something that's a huge concern, it could be, it could be part of it.
Thank you. I kind of agree, uh, I think we should stick with the special land use, and if he meets the criteria, and not bring in all, because there's other things we could probably bring up, but I think if we keep it simple, we can make a, a good decision either way. So, uh, with that, uh, if nobody has any other comments or questions, do we wanna vote on this tonight, or postpone it? It's, they wanna do something right away, so.
Is someone ready to make a motion?
Uh, I'll, I'll put that out there, if somebody wants to make a motion, then we can, uh, see if there's any objections to, uh, dealing with it tonight. All right, I'm gonna do a roll call, we'll start down with Kathy.
Is this vote to?
Vote tonight, or?
To vote tonight, or postpone?
Postpone it for two weeks.
Can vote tonight.
Ralph? Okay. I said my standard response, no matter who in the ac, applicant is, is two weeks. Thank you. Mr. Klonowski?
Tonight.
Mr. Brokhardt?
Tonight.
Mr. Renaud?
I'm okay with this evening.
Tonight?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Mr. Carr?
Tonight.
Mr. LaBelle?
Tonight.
And I'm good for tonight, so, we have, uh, eight, one, to vote tonight, so with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, the special land use for the public hearing, item A, Forest Glade Drive, detached, non-residential building, twenty-two-five dash zero-six. This is, tonight's discussion is a special land use on twenty-eight acres plus, located at three, I'm sorry, five-three-three-seven-seven, Forest Glade Drive. The parcel ID is one-five dash zero-nine dash one-zero dash four-hundred dash zero-zero-one. I'm sorry, I did the same thing Carl did, zero-one-one. As part of my motion, there are a, uh, to start the motion, I'd like to waive the requirements of sidewalks at this time. It's, it's a, it's a, it's, it's at the end of the street. If, in fact, the property is developed to the northeast? To the northeast, at that time, the, um, the applicant will be putting in sidewalks. Or if he builds, if he, if he has a building permit going at that moment, we'll, we'll waive the sidewalks until after the home is built. The, um, the second thing is the tree preservation. You've got twenty-eight, twenty-nine acres plus of property. Again, he's not clearing the, the entire site, he's clearing a four thousand square foot pad for a storage building. I think that we, that, in my opinion, we need to waive that. The frontage landscape, again, um, at this point, it's a gravel driveway going back to a building in, back in the woods. I would like to waive that requirement. As part of the special land use, there are eight criteria that have to be met. Number one, the proposed use shall be in such location, size, and character that will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the surrounding properties. This is a standalone piece of property that, um, is twenty-nine acres plus, twenty-eight acres plus. And, um, there really isn't any other development on this property, so, I believe that it does meet that criteria. Number two, the proposed use, showing the nature will make the vehicular and pedestrian traffic no more hazardous. The site is gonna have the applicant going in and out there with his, with his vehicle, putting his toys away. It's not gonna increase traffic, it's not gonna decrease traffic, it's, it's gonna be the same traffic that's already on, on, that it's being used as it is now. The proposed use shall be designed as such, located, size, intensity, site layout, and periods of operation such as proposed. It's a storage barn, only used for the applicant, for storage. It, it, it meets that criteria. Number four, the proposed use shall be such as proposed location, height of building, structures, and location, nature, height of walls. The, the, as, as presented, the building does fall within the township requirements. Number five, the proposed use shall relate harmony with the physical and economic aspects of the adjacent land uses in regards to prevailing shopping habits, convenience. That, that doesn't apply to this application. Number six, the proposed use is necessary for public convenience, again, it, it doesn't apply to what is, um, to this application. The proposed, number seven, the proposed use is so designed, located, planned, to be oriented that the public health, safety, and welfare will be protected. It's a, it's, it's a garage in the middle of the woods, it absolutely meets that requirement. And, number eight, the proposed use shall not cause substantial injury to the value of other properties in the vicinity in which it is to be located, it will not be determined to existing and/or other permitted land uses in that zoning district. It's a thirty acre parcel, twenty-nine acre plus parcel, that, um, he's putting a barn in the middle of the, um, of the property, or inside of the woods. It's not gonna affect anybody else's property, as we had heard from Mr. Renaud, who is actually very well-versed on that. I believe that I've covered everything that needs to be covered, with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
I just wanted to, uh, see if you would add to that, that there would be no business venture, any business run out of that building.
Good point, Mr. Chair. I would also, I'd like to add that there will be no businesses running in or out of that, out of that structure, as well as there being nobody living in that structure.
And that at this time, it's only gonna have electric?
It's only gonna have electric, there are no other utilities going into the building.
Okay. So, we've added that to the motion, so we have a motion by Mr. LaBelle, I'm looking for support. Have a motion by, uh, Rick LaBelle, supported by Richard Brokhardt, to approve the special land use, that it meets all the criteria for that property. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. It's all set. Thank you. Uh, there are no regular agenda items tonight. For presentation tonight, uh, we have a zoning ordinance amended, amendments, discussion for building materials.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, over here. Uh, so tonight, in your packet, we have a memo related to building materials. This is a continuation of our conversation two meetings ago, so a month ago. Um, we've made a couple of updates since you saw the language last, several of which were, uh, suggested by you at the last meeting that we discussed this. So, the language looks pretty similar. Uh, we did remove language about alterations, there was a section, uh, in the current ordinance that talked about this. We carried it over to the last draft, and we decided to remove it entirely. Uh, we corrected a typo, um, in a title, that was just kind of a, a quick administrative thing. The third item, the third bullet on the first page that talks about changes, notes that we updated section C of the proposed language to provide the schedule of pre-approved building materials and specifications, both on the planning department's website, or, excuse me, just on the planning department's website, and then also to require a date that the document was updated on the, the schedule. Um, we updated the table, uh, five-point-four-D-three-B. Previously, it just said masonry, and so we updated that to note that, uh, we mean brick or stone. And then finally, we removed EFS from the pre-approved building materials list, and just did some reorganization based on emphasizing what the township, um, likes to see, or what the preferences. So, um, the, the current language falls on page two, the proposed language starts at the bottom of page two, you can see a lot of red line and, uh, the new stuff in green, and then the clean language starts on page four. So, really, um, we're looking to see if, uh, this matches what you were hoping to see with building materials, and if it makes it sufficiently clear for staff and for applicants and for the planning commission to understand, and to have, um, more objective, uh, review of building materials. And then if you have any other questions or comments, we're happy to take those for this amendment at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? We'll start with Kathy. Eric? Ralph? James? Richard?
You have no questions.
Mark?
No questions, just a quick comment. Well done, uh, this version is excellent job, so thank you for your efforts.
Brian? Rick?
No comments at this point. Our next step is a public hearing, is that a public hearing with this group, or is it with the, um, the elected officials?
Next step would be a public hearing with the planning commission, and the planning commission would make a recommendation to the township board. So, if the, if the planning commission was ready for this draft, we could, uh, schedule the public hearing for, uh, December second.
I'm sorry, that was December second?
Correct.
We don't have to vote on that, that too. We're just gonna, we don't have to make a motion or anything, it's just gonna show up on December second.
Yeah, we'll just go out and handle it administratively and schedule it.
I just had, uh, one question about, I know we were talking about painted materials, but what about stain? If somebody was gonna use a solid color stain on a, on a brick surface? It's not really addressed. Not sure if it has to be addressed, if it's new construction. Uh, any reasons to address anything if it's an existing building? With stain?
But wouldn't the stain fall under paint in a relationship, if it's more of a solid?
I think they apply differently, don't they?
They do, well, one, you know, absorbs compared to coats, but.
So, I don't know if that, I don't know if that needs to be part of this, since it's paint or stain.
I think we just word it, paint and/or stain.
For new construction, anything new. So everybody, anybody agree that we add the stain to it? Okay. Uh, so with that, Mr. LaBelle, you had something to add?
Or is this something that, um, because I, I think that where we're gonna have, where we're gonna have discussion with stain is, um, if you've got a precast building, you've got a, you know, a, a tilt-up building where they're, they're precasting concrete off-site and, um, they bring out walls and they stand them up with a crane. They support them. At that time, they typically will stain the concrete at that time. Um, a lot of times, they don't mix colorant in the inside of the, um, during the process, simply because they pour a panel, always one piece, where you may have different colors throughout the panel, so they, they, they really can't do that. So that's where stain would come into effect. I personally think that when, when that situation comes up, we should leave the ordinance as is or we don't allow paint on new construction. And if in fact, there is an instance where we're gonna have a tilt-up, a tilt-up situation where pre-manufactured walls are built, at that time, we can have a discussion about stain. We could look into what kind of warranty they're gonna give us and that kinda thing. I, I, I kinda think that we would be opening a can of worms if we, if we include stain in the wording now, because it can be interpreted in many different ways and we would be opening Pandora's box.
Okay. We'll just keep it simple then. Um, so we're gonna have the meeting come up, uh, um, a public hearing for this, uh, item in a few weeks. Uh, planning commission comments? If anybody has anything to add to anything? You got three minutes. Kathy? Eric? Ralph? James? Rich? Mark?
All set.
Brian?
Uh, just, uh, the meeting two weeks from now. It doesn't matter, he's right here. Uh, the meeting two weeks from now, uh, right now I'm scheduled to travel, but I'm supposed to be flying, so I don't know. You know, we'll see. So I'll, I'll let you know.
Yeah, just give me a heads up and I'll make sure.
Well, that's why I've been pushing off all my, uh, flying travel. I've been driving every week. I'm driving this week and next week.
Something's gonna break loose this week, uh...
Yeah, we'll see.
So...
Then that plane crash in St. Louis, I'm like, that was today. Did you see that one?
No.
Oh, uh, yeah, oh, no, it was, uh, Louisville.
Might wanna drive, might wanna drive.
That's what I've been doing. I'm driving tomorrow and I'm driving next week.
So just let me know ahead of time and I'll make sure that, uh, it's noted. Mr. LaBelle, I'm, and I'm all set. So with that, I will make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting at eight oh eight. Motion by Carl Leonard, supported by Mark Renaud, to adjourn tonight's meeting at eight...